Twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, then they realized their mistakes, so I'm back alive in twenty fourteen. Contacted them, they said, okay, you're alive in twenty twelve, but I'm still dead in twenty thirteen. Or twenty twelve, but I'm still accruing interest and penalties. And they won't fix it. I hope so. Yeah, but I don't get a tax refunds because of it, because I'm deceased. That government wonderful, I'm sorry, I'm encroaching.
I couldn't hear you, you weren't using your mic.
I was though. I will make sure I speak more projectively, more loudly.
Maybe it just wasn't close enough.
Hi Sue.
Okay.
Are we good on Ryan's end? We good, Ryan?
Yeah, we're good to go.
We're good to go? Okay. Is this thing on? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Denellan Borough Council Meeting, seven P M, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty four. The first item on the agenda is a call to order and pledge of allegiance, so please rise for the pledge. Item number two on the agenda is a reading of the Sunshine Statement and Roll Call by our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lauren Stats.
This meeting of the Denellan Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, was included in a list of meetings that was advertised on the Courier on January eighth, two thousand twenty four, and as a teleconference was noticed on the official Denellan website on April tenth, two thousand twenty four, and on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on April tenth, two thousand twenty four, and has remained continuously posted as required notice under the state statute. Mayor Solento?
Present.
Council President Albertson?
Here.
Mrs. Lance?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Sigmund?
Here.
And Mr. Vandermark? Noted absent.
Item number three on the agenda is Resolution one twenty four to nominate a candidate to replace Joseph Paul John in the Denellan Borough Council. So I'm just going to read the resolution out, and then I will ask for a nomination second, and we'll take a roll call if there's not sufficient votes, we'll go and ask for another nomination second. You get the point. So whoever wins by the name is by majority vote is going to spill the secret. So Resolution number one twenty four, Resolution to nominate a candidate to replace Joseph Paul John on the Denellan Borough Council. Whereas Joseph Paul John resigned his position as a council member for the Borough, Borough of Denellan on April first, two thousand twenty four. And whereas the Republican Municipal Committee has presented to the Borough Council the names of three eligible persons to fill the vacancy. And whereas the three persons' names are Teresa Ratner, Jeremy Rayteig, and William Scott. Clerical matter is the name is spelled correct. And whereas by motion and second blank. Well, so has been presented for the council nomination, council vote, so out of the three names presented, does the council have a nomination to fill the vacancy once held by Joseph Paul John?
I'd like to nominate William Scott.
Do we have a second?
I thought, yeah.
I second.
Okay, Albertson, Sigmund, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And then Mr. Vandermark is absent.
So Resolution passes, William Scott will be seated, so at this time we'll have a swearing in, right? Okay. Okay. I state your name, I'm William Scott. Do solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey, and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and to the government, governments established in the United States, and to the governments established in the United States, and in this state, and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform, impartially and justly perform all duties of the office of council person according to the best of my ability, so help me God. All duties in the office of council person according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Councilmember Scott, you have some big shoes to fill over there from Councilman Coach Joe Paul John. We're happy to have you as part of the team. If anybody doesn't know, Councilmember Scott now, which will get you the nameplate for next council meeting, also serves as the Fire Department Chief, and he's served this community for how many years in emergency services?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. He works at Rutgers as so this is a gentleman who is well qualified for the position, and he will be an advocate for emergency services as all members of the council in my office are. So again, we wish you the best. Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you. You're welcome. Okay. Next up is the approval of our meeting minutes, item number four. Can I have a motion a second to move forward regular meetings of April first, two thousand twenty-four?
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Are there any comments, additions, or redactions? Okay, Councilmember Scott, this would be an item you would abstain from.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Upstayed.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Item number five on our agenda is a proclamation honoring the Ark Middlesex County in celebrating seventy-five years of outstanding support and caregiving. I have asked Council President Terry Albertson to read the proclamation as she has served members of this community throughout her career as an educator, so it's close to her heart. And then Mrs. Stats, once this has been signed, we can send it over to them that we did sign it proclaim.
Sure. Whereas developmental and intellectual disabilities manifest during the formative years of life before the age of twenty-two and are lifelong in duration, resulting in the continuing need for a variety of services designed to support full inclusion in community life. Whereas it is estimated that approximately two percent of the United States population has an intellectual or developmental disability, which translates to approximately one hundred and seventy-eight thousand children and adults in New Jersey. And the Ark Middlesex County alone serves three hundred and thirty-three individuals and their families, and whereas the Ark Middlesex County has worked collaboratively with individuals with developmental and or intellectual disabilities, their families, organizations, coalitions, state and local agencies, and whereas the Ark Middlesex County has valued and promoted effective partnerships between community partners, volunteers, staff, and leadership at all levels, and whereas the Ark Middlesex County is guided in the belief that all people with intellectual and or developmental disabilities are defined by their own strengths, abilities, and inherent value, not by their disability, and are entitled to the respect, dignity, safety, and security according to other members of society and are equal before the law. Whereas the Ark Middlesex County has articulated a positive vision for the future of people with developmental and or intellectual disabilities, and has catalyzed public and private support to the realization of that vision by its unwavering commitment to its individuals, families, community, leadership, staff, and volunteers, and whereas in seventy-five years, the Ark Middlesex County has led in the area of providing support, care, and opportunity with integrity and accountability that reflects quality and excellence in all its work. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Jason F. Solento and the Burn Borough Council of Denellan, New Jersey do hereby recognize the Ark Middlesex County in celebrating seventy-five years of outstanding and dedicated contributions in caregiving and support to empower individuals with developmental and or intellectual disabilities and their families to live their lives in the fullest.
Thank you, Council President. Item number six on our agenda is the introduction of ordinances. First up is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven, an ordinance to amend Chapter one sixty-eight Food Handling Establishments, Section one sixty-eight dash two, license required, feed expiration. Can I have a motion and a second?
Move it, second, Rios.
Okay, as this is introduced, we don't discuss it, we'll see it at the next meeting for a public hearing and adoption. You can pick up any ordinances for review at the municipal clerk's office or online. So roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion a second on item twenty twenty-four dash twelve, an ordinance to amend several sections of Chapter two twenty-seven Secondhand Goods and Precious Metals?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Can I have a motion and second item? Introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, a bond ordinance providing for sewer improvements in and by the Borough of Denellan appropriating three hundred and twenty thousand dollars thereof and authorizing the issuance of three hundred and twenty thousand bonds of notes to the borough, of the borough to finance the cost of thereof.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, joking. Item number seven on our agenda is the public hearing and adoption, high lieutenant of ordinances. First up is twenty twenty-four dash zero seven, an ordinance amending Chapter two zero eight Peace and Good Order of the Code of the Borough of Denellan to add a new section two, two zero eight dash four entitled Resident Protection. Have a motion and a second.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Before we open up to the public, I'll just summarize really quick. We added this section for additional opportunity for violations to be issued to anybody who trespasses on individuals' properties without, you know, want the resident wanting them to be there, and provides beyond just what the municipal court, I mean, the county court would do, we can also issue fines and community service through the municipal court. Is that correct? Okay, so without further ado, we will open ordinance solely ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero four to the public. We ask that you please state your name and address. Without hearing any, we will close that portion. We'll open the floor to the council and mayor for any comments and discussion. Okay, without hearing any, if approved, we'll send this over in memo form to the police department, and we'll start enforcing. Okay. Yes, Councilmember Scott's able to vote, correct? Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, can we have a roll call?
Yes.
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 Can I have a motion and second on twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-four?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mr. Olson, our CFO, would you like to just briefly touch on this before we open up to the public?
ordinance creates a ordinance creates a, it's called a cap bank, which is basically an insurance policy against costs that are increasing to make sure that we have enough room in the budget to accommodate such an, such an increase. It's not an actual bank where there's any money. It's just, it creates headroom in our, in our budget. That's the most important part of it. It's also followed by being able to carry these funds forward for two successive years. And that's the important part, because if we run into budget trouble down the road, then this will allow us to overcome that. So it's a budget tool, really, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. With hearing that summarization, any members of the public that would like to ask any questions or make any comments solely on twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, here is your time, please state your name and address. Without hearing any, we will close that portion to the public. Council, any discussions or questions pertaining to twenty twenty-four dash zero eight? Okay, without hearing any, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Item, can I have a Yes, okay. Can I have a motion a second on twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, a bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the Borough of Denellan appropriating one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars thereof, and authorizing the issuance of four hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred funds, the notes of the borough to finance parts of the cost thereof.
Move it, Rios. Second, Sigmund.
Rios, Sigmund, just for public knowledge. This is funding Second Street Improvements as well as a CIT assessment. Second Street Improvements between Madison and Middlesex border will be reimbursed through grants that we receive from the state, but we have to upfront the money. So, but there is a clerical matter, clerical matter, we do have to do with this ordinance because the ordinance reflected that the payments would be in the prior would be coming from the Capital Improvement Fund and not, will be coming from the Capital Improvement Fund and not the capital surplus as previously stated. So in doing this, would we motion second on that with that amendment?
Motion to amend the ordinance to, and it's been published in this fashion, it's not substantive change. So any adoption would include the amendment to page three, paragraph C. It just cracks the clerical error to reflect the payment is coming from the Capital Improvement Fund. So the motion on that.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, also just to note that it also includes wayfinding sign project along North Avenue, North Avenue, which also will be offset by a grant received from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Okay, so with that, we will open the floor to the public for any comments and questions solely to twenty twenty-four dash zero nine. Please state your name and address. Without hearing any, we'll close that to the public. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay, closing that, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Item number eight on the agenda is resolutions. Mrs. Stats, the municipal clerk, will read them through, but will give us the opportunity to discuss or ask any questions before we take a final vote.
Right, Resolution number one twenty-five is to pay the bills.
Move it, Albertson.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one twenty-six is to hire Christopher Beenders as captain of the Denellan Police Department, effective September first, two thousand twenty-four. Move it, Rios.
Second, Albertson.
Before we vote, I would just like to note, Lieutenant, we are happy that if approved tonight, you would be accepting of this. Lieutenant has served the borough for over twenty years, twenty-five? Twenty-eight, more than what I thought. Exactly, and he has served the town honorably and with integrity, and so I fully endorse this this evening. I know the business administrator does, so does the chief of police, Daniel Smith, and the police committee. To me, there's no better candidate for this position as we create it. And by creating this role, we're creating opportunity for the Denellan Police Department for the ranks to move up, because this position was not, it was there, but then over the years it's not been there, we're bringing it back. And so this creates career development, and the individual to help now build out this role. We're looking forward to it, and he's highly qualified, so let's take a vote on this.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Congratulations, and on September second, we'll have a nice ceremony here. Okay.
Resolution number one twenty-seven is to issue Tristone Capital a tax sale redemption.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one twenty-eight is authorizing the municipal clerk to administer all temporary retail food establishment permits for the open air market from April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four to October twentieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one twenty-nine is approving a first amendment to the redevelopment agreement buying between the Borough of Denellan and Chelsea Builders.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Speaking to this, this is property number four, four, four forty, North Ave, right next to Quick Check. This is a development project that was approved probably about a year and a half to two years now.
I think two years.
Both by redevelopment agency, was mayor and council, and the planning board. From time to time, we do have to amend the redevelopment agreements specifically as it relates to the schedule in which they were supposed to start the project. Sometimes when that happens, it's due to supply chain issues, inflation, matters that would hold up a construction project, so this amendment specifically amends the schedule, so it's updated, and they plan to start work within the next month. So that's what this, this is what this resolution is.
All right, I'll take a roll, Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Or Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one thirty is authorizing the purchase and installation of a borough phone system under a state contract.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Very much looking forward to this. It'd be nice to have an updated system, and one in which will cost us less money. Mr. Miller, do you want to address this for council?
Yes, so the new system will be replacing a twenty-year-old system that we have right now. It is obviously over time, technology has changed, and it'll be much improved in all our departments with the phone system, and there's a lot of people adds to it that will help out.
We're expected to have a cost savings.
Yeah, we should save around ten thousand dollars here.
Music to our ears.
Might be a little bit more, it's just an estimated cost, and that's over the first five years, and then after that we'll save it before, because we're really like leasing the phone for five years.
Okay.
Awesome.
Sounds good.
I do have one question. Will this also help us with our occasional hybrid meetings here in the office?
Yes, it'd be like a Star Trek, or it'll be like that.
That's fantastic, thank you.
Good question.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one thirty-one is determining that the property identified as block eighty-five, lot three be designated as non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
So if the council and as redevelopment agency remembers, and for the new members, this is, I guess, an education. Last year, we directed the planning board to look at the properties behind what is now the Denellan Station, which is nothing but vacant land and old, broken-down warehouses, to see if they are areas that should be brought into our redevelopment plan, so we can actually bring life over there. So the planning board did their study, they brought it back to us saying it is an area that could be brought in, and so this resolution recognizes that this, this parcel will be brought into our redevelopment plan as an area that could be redeveloped. That's what this is. That's what this is.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mister Scott?
Abstained.
Mister Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one thirty two is a resolution authorizing the execution of a rights of way agreement between the Borough of Danell and Comcast Business Communications to permit the installation, use, and maintenance of telecommunications facilities within public rights of way for purposes of providing telecommunications services.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
So as you'll remember, Comcast came to our prior council meetings to present that they're gonna seek through the BPU, uh, the Board of Public Utilities, um, the opportunity to bring their internet and cable and telephone services to Danell. Give optimum and I'll tease a little run for their money as the article said. Um, but, um, so that's for residential and business. But in doing so, um, this resolution allows them to speed up the opportunity for them to start offering those services to the businesses. Statutorily through the state, they are able to do this. They need a resolution by us. Um, we did have, the, the, the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities did have their public hearing, um. Here, what was the date? Last week, I believe, last Monday. Uh, there's a four P M and five P M. I did make a statement. Um, we're unaware of the direction they're going to go. I think we can be optimistic. Um, but at, at the very least, we can start now with the, with our downtown and the businesses in the community getting services. And then once the New Jersey BPU approves, if they approve, we can then start implementing it to the residents. And, uh, we can give competition the way it should be. Okay, so that's what this is.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mister Scott?
Yes.
Mister Sigmund?
Yes.
Sorry. There, okay. Item number nine on the agenda are, is our council reports. Council President Albertson, anything to report?
Yes, the fire department, um, the bays for the fire truck should be ready for them to move in by this weekend. Uh, they have a TCO inspection this week and hope to open up bays will be turned over to them by Friday. Shade Tree Committee met on Wednesday, April tenth at seven P M in the senior center. They will be doing an Arbor Day ceremony at Faber School on April twenty sixth. A new tree, which was donated by Caffrey Landscape, will be planted the day before. The Friends of Danell Public Library and the Downtown Danell Merchants Association are excited for Sunday's Open Air Market grand opening of the two thousand and twenty four season. Once again this year, we'll be featuring Downtown Danell Management Organization's Spring Into Wellness Event. Come join the fun. There'll be Zumba, yoga, martial arts, music, and dance presentations. Meet our awesome vendors, taste some great food. Uh, all vendor fees go to support the Danell Public Library. And the Danell Municipal Alliance will be at the Spring Into Wellness Event on the twenty first. Stop by the table and meet the SUDS team, the self underage drinking students, participate in a game show, and get to know about our commitment to educate the community about substance use disorders and prevention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Looking forward to Arbor Day. It's one of my favorite events throughout the year. Uh, council member Rios, anything to report?
Yes, uh, Danell Parks and Rec Department's spring tennis, youth spring tennis opened up this past Saturday. We have over forty kids registered for the program, grades three through eight. Spring Open Soccer is set to start this week. We are still looking for volunteer parent coaches for each grade level. Opening day, our opening day parade, parade is this Saturday, April twentieth. Teams will be meeting at Washington Park at nine forty five A R, A M. Ceremony to follow to McCoy, uh, Danell Public Library. On behalf of the trustees and staff, thank you to the borough for arranging for the repairs of the library roof. The Danell Public Library's special programs this month include an open house for families of Spanish speaking, English language learners from the Danellan School District. On Wednesday, April seventeenth, from five P M to six P M. A salt dough craft for toddlers and young children at four fifteen on Tuesday, April twenty third. And a Dungeons and Dragons campaign for students fifth grade and up, starting on April thirtieth at three thirty. Danell and Board of Ed, all meetings start at seven and go immediately into executive session. Public sessions will begin approximately at seven thirty unless otherwise specified. Board of Ed meetings. Sorry, Board of Ed meetings will help, uh, or are held in person at LMS Cafeteria and can be streamed online on YouTube. Next Board of Ed meeting will be April sixteenth. If you have any comments, questions, or concerns about the budget, school lunches, or any other subjects, any other subjects, I suggest you attend this meeting. The public budget hearing personnel is scheduled for May seventh. Now that the weather is finally getting warm, I ask that you drive down the street. Oh, all right, I asked that as you drive down the streets of Danell and you're careful with bike riders, bouncing balls that run free, and children crossing. Let's start the warm weather off on a positive note. That's all for me today.
Okay, thank you, council member, and I think for opening day, I'm gonna have, if anybody wants to volunteer to help me warm up my, uh, my, my pitch arm. I was never a pitcher. I was only ever at second base, so. Um, yeah, there we go. I might need help this week before the twentieth. Um, council member Howes absent this evening, um, but we're thinking of him. Uh, council member, uh, Lance.
Um, for buildings and grounds, over the last few weeks, thirty two trees were planted in the parks. Uh, the school district received a grant from Mayor Salento, Alex Miller, and Ken Bodden Distel from the Shade Tree Commission who worked with the school in two thousand and twenty three. And Mayor Salento will have more details on that grant. Um, we are glad the new phone system has been approved by the borough. We will replace a twenty year old system that will help all our departments with upgraded technology and save the borough around ten thousand dollars a year. And the ball fields, um, continue to be maintained, um, for Danellan High School and Lincoln Middle School, baseball and softball, in preparation for the spring recreation season. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Sigmund.
Sorry, uh, mic was off. No report other than to, uh, remind residents out there that you don't have to be a great athlete to be a great role model. And, uh, we are still looking for soccer coaches, so please volunteer, so, uh, my children can play soccer. And, uh, as we are preparing for the spring sports, uh, please, please volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Um, I'm assuming you have no reports this evening, but you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity. I look forward to working with everybody. I don't know if I can keep up the comedy show we had before. I got pretty, pretty big shoes to fill, uh, but again, just appreciate everything and all the help so far.
Okay, well, again, welcome to the team. We're looking forward to working with you. Um, uh, so the New Jersey American Water Project along, uh, Wash- Washington Avenue, uh, between North and First Street. Um, they've told us the project's mill and pave phase is expected to occur in May, so we will, uh, send out those notices. Um, the Pulaski Street Colbert Project, um, the South, uh, Abundment and the Wing Walls are completed. Uh, the Northern footing is poured in the first of the two, uh, abutments, uh, pours scheduled for tomorrow. Uh, so by the end of this month, the Northern Abutments and Wing Walls will be complete and may have the bridge beams in place. So at that point, the gas company, uh, will need to come in and run their new main and hang it from the bridge. Uh, water company will also need to, uh, permanently reinstall its water main. Uh, so we're looking at a completion around June, uh, depending upon the speed of gas and water companies. Say a prayer for that, uh, re- reinstalling their permanent mains. Uh, July fourth should be a safe target date with a little cushion for utilities to do their installs. Uh, regarding the Klein Place Project, again, another road improvement through New Jersey Department of Transportation Municipal Aid Grant Funds. Um, this past week, our engineering firm, CME Associates, uh, had a representative drop off letters, uh, from the town in their office to the residents at Klein Place, Kennedy Court, JDOC Place, and Pearl Place, to let everyone know that the project will be starting. Excuse me, within the next two weeks. Uh, the letter also informed the residents that if there are any issues or concerns, they can contact, uh, their foreman, uh, well, the project supervisor from CME. Again, May nineteenth is the multi-site cleanup of the Greenbrook. Uh, this is our third year of the multi-municipality and multi-partner initiative, which includes the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership, the Mayor's Alliance for a Clean Greenbrook Waterway, and many more. So please join us at McCoy Park at nine thirty A M to clean up the Greenbrook. Um, council member Rios, uh, you've helped us get Boy Scouts in the past and Girl Scouts will help us again. Thank you. Um, and anybody else who's associated to programs and, uh, youth groups, we'd love to have them a part of it. Um, the Greenbrook, uh, trash trap, um, we're expecting to hear from the contractor soon again about the delivery date. Beautiful, so the mounts for that are gonna be going up, and it's been a project along in the waiting. But when you get the federal government, state government involved, it's nothing but a bureaucratic red tape nightmare. But we got it for free, so I guess you can't complain. Uh, Danell and Volunteer Picnic and Events, please join us for the Danell's First Volunteer Picnic Day on Sunday, April twenty eighth, twelve P M at Columbia Park. Uh, this will also give committees, commission boards, and authorities the opportunity to showcase their agencies and explain to the public about their missions and goals. And hopefully encourage more people to sign up and volunteer, as council member Sigmund said. Um, I'm also planning a mayoral town hall called Volunteering in Danell for Thursday, April twenty fifth at seven P M at the Danell Senior Center, Columbia Park, so please join us. Uh, and finally, just want to say thank you to Kelly Cedar for helping get the social media campaign for the week of April seventh to the thirteenth, uh, together, uh, which showcased our public employees and various volunteer committees and commissions. I will state this, Kelly went well and above and beyond what her role is in town. She always does, but specifically here. Um, she did not, i- it's not part of her job description, but she stepped in in place of someone who's unfortunately resigned. Um, and in other areas too, she's been pitching in, so I just wanna, you know, when people do good, you wanna recognize that. So Kelly's been going well above and beyond, so we're very happy with, uh, Ms. Cedar. Uh, the tree project with the school, as council member Lance referred to, uh, this year, the borough, um, uh, worked along with the school district and the Shade Tree Commission on a tree grant through Sustainable Jersey Trees for School. Um, I just want to thank, uh, the school Business Administrator, Rich Pepe, um, and the facility groundskeeper, Matt Olivi, as well as the superintendent, um, and Sandy Hoy, who led this project and put a lot of time and effort into the grant. Um, also extended thanks to Ken Bodden Distel from the Shade Tree Commission, who advised the team on which tree selection should be placed. Uh, our parks have thirty two new trees. Um, I'll provide the breakdown in the meeting minutes. I'm not gonna go through it. I can tell you Washington Memorial Park has ten trees, new trees, Morcraft has four new trees, Gavornik Park has four new trees, Columbia Park has fourteen new trees. Um, so, um, making Danell and green again, so it'd be very nice. Okay, uh, that's it from my report. Any reports from the department heads? No? Okay, um, we will open the floor to item number eleven to the public comments. We ask that you please state your name and address for purposes related between in-person and virtual. We will start with those in-person. Um, if you would like to state your name and address, and then once we feel that we're completed in person, we'll go to virtual. This way, there's just no mix up in communication. So, uh, in-person, members of the public, any other comments or questions? Please state your name and address.
Which is actually located on the corner of Columbia and, uh, South Washington. Here tonight because, uh, we're having a lot of issues on Columbia with reckless driving and excessive speed. Um, in the last three, three weeks alone, my son, who is six, I literally had to push out of the way while kids swerved towards us and a car. Uh, and I know of two other incidences where people were almost ran down. Uh, here is a petition from every resident on the street, um, that has witnessed or experienced this in one way or the other. Um, I don't know if we can get some extra patrols or different type of patrol, uh, you know, parked happily. Something's gotta be done. It's, it's a matter of when, not if. Um, you know, everybody on the street is concerned, uh, every twenty minutes to a half hour, if somebody's going down the street forty, fifty miles an hour. And again, there's a lot of kids on that street, and it's dead end. Where are you going? You know, um, so I'm really hoping, you know, um, that's why I came to talk to the council in public. Uh, I know a few officers that I've spoke with on a personal level, but they tell me this is the way to go about it. So I would appreciate anything, you know, that the town can do to help us out over there.
We appreciate you bringing to our attention, uh, Lieutenant Beenders is here. Uh, I know Officer Condes is the, is signed up to be the traffic safety, am I understanding that correctly? So he will work with him through Chief Smith about addressing your concern and possibly, well, hopefully having patrol in the area. Um, do you have a general idea, time of day when this happens?
Uh, during the week, it's between three and say eight P M. Um, doesn't usually start till around four. We, everybody seems to notice, it seems to be a majority of younger kids, um, you know. But there are, I personally had a confrontation with someone that deliberately looked me in the face and gave me a finger and put it to the floor going down the street.
Okay.
Um, obviously, he underestimated the old guy. He won't do it again. But, um, you know, we, we really need some help over there because somebody's gonna get hurt.
We understand, so, uh, before you leave for the evening, we can address Lieutenant. He'll, he, you know, he always talks to residents on their way out who have these concerns, and, uh, he will handle the matter.
I, I do appreciate your time, guys. I really do. I'm gonna leave this for you.
Yep.
Uh, with Alex.
Leave it with Alex.
Alex has got a copy also, and again, anything you guys can do to help, we would appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other members of the public in person, please state your name and address? He took the words right out of your mouth? Well, thank you for being the representative. Perfect, perfect, and I know you have concerns about cars parking directly near the intersection. We'll handle that too. Uh, we can still enforce locally, yeah. Well, we'll talk to Lieutenant afterward, okay? Okay, it appears that there's no, no, no Miss Conley? Okay, there's no, uh, members of the public in person that have any more additional, uh, public comments? Can we open it to the virtual world? We just asked that you please state your name and address? Nobody? Okay, we will close that portion of the meaning of public comments. Um, so, item number, so from Roman numeral, so, uh, item number twelve. I, I do this every meeting. I just had a brain fart, sorry. Uh, item number twelve, um, I am human, you know, item number twelve. Um, we have a resolution to go into executive session. I will read the resolution out, but I will note that, uh, once we come back into public session, uh, from resolution one thirty four, we will have no, um, business to conclude. So just so the public is aware of that, we're going into executive, but there will be no action or business taken. Oh, there could be, sorry. Thank you. There could be action taken, so. Can I have a motion in second on resolution number one thirty three, um, to enter into executive session? Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten, uh, four dash six permits the closing of meetings to the public under certain circumstances, and whereas there exists such a circumstance, and whereas authorizing the Borough Council to go into executive session to discuss litigation, after which action may be taken. I should have just read the resolution. And whereas minutes of the executive session will be kept and will be released when the matters under discussion during the executive session are no longer confidential. Therefore be resolved, the Borough Council, into executive session. Can, so can I have a motion in second, please?
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Okay, so at this time, we're gonna take a five-minute recess before we go into executive. Uh, Dale, we'll, we'll go talk to Lieutenant. Um, Ryan, you know what to do in terms of.
Okay, welcome back. We are now in regular session after the executive session and there is action to take. Mr. William Rob Robertson, our borough attorney will read the resolution and then we'll ask for a motion in a second.
Yes, it would be a motion to authorize payment of a supplemental assessment in the amount of $414,883 to the Middlesex County Joint Insurance Fund on a six-year payment schedule specifically subject to acceptance of such satisfaction by the fund and confirmation by the fund of coverage during the assessment period with the an actual resolution to be reduced to writing tomorrow.
Can I have a motion a second?
Move it.
Second, Albertson.
Okay, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Okay, no further business to do. So at that time, at this time, item number 14 is adjournment. Item which is on the agenda has 135 but it'll be 136 resolution to adjourn. Can I have a motion a second please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second.
Scott.
Okay, there you go. All in favor say aye.
Aye.